Our work session, those who are here in person, as well as those who may be watching us by social media, welcome you here. Our work sessions are informal. It gives the board an opportunity to ask questions and hopefully by asking questions and listening, we're able to make intelligent decisions. With that being said, we have an agenda here and we're going to do our best to follow the agenda. First, on the agenda, celebrating America 250 in Pike County, Ms. Gannette Daniels.
Mayor, select woman, and select woman, Ms. Collins. Thank you so much for letting me come tonight. I just wanted to talk to you about something that's very positive for Pike County, something that's very motivating for Macomb and a town where sometimes we really need to be motivated and something that's very American. As you can see, I'm wearing red, white, and blue because patriotic colors have no fashion code. It doesn't matter that I'm wearing white pants after Labor Day. It's patriotic. 2026 is a year that I've been looking forward to for a long time and I put a lot of thought into it because as a former history teacher, I really appreciate not only the history of our town, but the history of our nation. And so I'm excited that we're going to be able to celebrate the 250th birthday of our nation this year. And we're hoping that as the Railroad Museum sponsors this event, that we will have a lot of participation from different organizations, the various cities. I've spoken with mayors, I've already started forming committees. And what I'm seeking from you tonight is support, not financial support. Aren't you glad? No financial request from you. But I would like to ask for your support in the events that we're going to have throughout 2026. Everything will not be grandiose. Some events will be small, but we have a huge variety of things that will be going on. And I would love to have your support, not financially. Of course, if you want to give us some money, that's okay too. But not financially, but just in participating with us and being a part of it. If you want to volunteer, I promise you that the mayor and Ms. Patty can tell you how to get in touch with me. You will be receiving a letter within the next two or three weeks that will be outlining what our events might possibly be and even giving the names of various people from different towns that will be planning these events. We've got a lot of excitement going on about it. I'm going to apply for a grant and we have to have matching funds for the grant and I've already been working on that. So I've been a busy little bee, that's my little name, Busy Bee, and a lot's going on. Hopefully the Railroad Museum will be all settled by the first of the year and then I can focus some of that extra attention on our celebration of 2026. We need to celebrate America because without the freedoms of America, you would not be sitting on this board because you're all elected. You're elected by the people and that's a freedom that we have that all countries do not have. So I want you to help me as we acknowledge the good things that we have in our community and the good things that we have in our country and the true old-fashioned spirit of '76. And we're going to celebrate it in 2026. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Select McCarthy, I saw your pen, was that?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is kind of a pretty cool initiative from my perspective. The P4 World Cup comes to the U.S. next year, which is a really big international soccer tournament. And then the co-chairs for this event were appointed during Trump's first term, were Obama and Bush and their first ladies from the time. So especially everything going on now, it's really cool to see that them three came together and that those two people were appointed to lead this event and the planning on national stage.
Do want to say on Ms. Gannette Daniels' behalf, she came to me. She was the only person who came to me and asked me about the 250th celebration. And I asked her, would she spearhead? And she took it and she's running with it and I really appreciate her. We need more citizens volunteering to do things like this because the city can't do everything. Okay?
Everybody's important.
Yes.
And everybody can participate in this. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gannette. Number two, we've taken care of number two in our special call meeting. So we go to number three, invoices, Garrett Smith.
All right, so we've got one invoice here and then a change order to talk about. First one is pay application number eight for the overlay project. Just to give an update on that, contractor finished his base repairs on North Locust Street. Got that, all except for right at the intersection of Locust Street and Pearl River there. So they've got one left to do. That was because of a water leak that was there. So they've got that street finished. Monday, they were working on speed bumps in front of Marion. I believe they got all, they got three left to do there. We were out there with them consistently making sure that those were adequate, not too harsh. I was really pleased with what they finished up with.
Before you go, I do want to say I drove through there to make sure and got out parked, got out and looked. So, you know, the mayor is constantly checking on projects and making sure things are, you know, we're getting for what we paid for.
They put down some temporary striping just on those speed bumps to make sure people can see them at night. They will come back and paint those speed bumps, so those will be painted. Some of the work that's left to do is in the Barretown area. They still got a good bit of water work complete there. They should be moving in here soon to finish that up. Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, we were told that just striping for Marion's complete, Simon Street is complete. They were supposed to then go to downtown. When are they going to get there?
So they did leave. We were working to get them back in as quickly as possible. I talked with the contractor last week, Dick Schenbowen, telling them that we're ready for them to come back in and get called up on what's left to be striped. He's supposed to be providing a schedule, they haven't done that yet. We're working to get them back in as quickly as we can.
We need that done as quick as we can get it done.
Yes, I'll reach back out to them.
Yes, sir, Select McCarthy.
Did we include striping between third and fourth on the change order? On nowhere? No, we did not. Where are you going? In front of McDonald's? Oh, yeah, that's included.
Okay. You can continue.
So that's it on that project. Second one that we got here is a change order for the wastewater treatment plant project. So that project has been complete. This is, what we've got here was for the fine screen. So one of the fine screens that we got there, CSI Control Systems came down, looked at it. There is a defective piece that's in the control panel that's not communicating correctly. Right now it's having to be run in manual. So this is to get everything, talking to each other so that it can be run correctly. So we've got a change order here for $6,840.
That panel was not a panel that we replaced? Okay. Because I was thinking if it was a panel that we replaced, it would be on the warranty.
Right, no, this is what exists.
Okay. Okay, that's Select McCarthy.
Where is it at in the plant, the wash press?
So this is one of the fine screens.
Just weird question, why doesn't Infomart just handle it? Why is it included in the project?
So the control panel was not in the project, but it was to put the fine screens in.
Oh, copy. It's part of the fine screen system.
Yeah, I would, you could make an argument there, but I think this is part of the project. And again, this is just a change order to do this, really, I mean, you'd be paying Infomart to go do that as well. But no, I do, I do agree that it is part of the project.
Okay. Any other questions? I told you, we didn't have enough time to get that through. So we'll have that at the regular board meeting. He has to have time to get that done. Okay? All right, put these on the agenda, okay? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Number four, Mr. Jeremy Worm Johnson.
Have to adjust this. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Worm Johnson, as you just said. I'm the director of Invictus Football Club. And honestly, I kind of just wanted to share some good news. And primarily, I wanted to start with kind of just giving a background of who we are as a club and what we're doing. So Invictus Football Club obviously is a soccer organization. And since May 2023, we've had the mission to provide and maintain a high-quality soccer experience for the underserved youth in the communities of southwest Mississippi and eastern Louisiana. In these past two and a half years, we've impacted over 100 youth soccer players from as far west as Natchez, north as Madison, east as Monticello, and south as Independence, Louisiana, all of which have made the trek to come to our home here in Macomb. Of those players, we've sent eight athletes to college to play soccer on scholarships. And this from an area that's often overlooked in the soccer community. We also competed in our first semi-pro adult season in the Gulf Coast Premier League this past summer with players coming from as far as Arkansas to play for us. In the spring of 2024, we made an agreement with the city of Macomb to take over operations at Edgewood Park. And the grass was like shoulder height to me. I'm 6'2", 6'3" or so. The ground was unkempt and even in that, though, we saw the potential that the place had and we had been taking care of it and no cost to the city ever since. And for us, with the recent plan shift to Miles to Park, I was very, very discouraged. And I was just like, I feel like, you know, people are trying to fail the youth or like they're trying to snatch something from the youth. But I spoke with the mayor and he was like, honestly, the plan has always been to, you know, upgrade bathrooms, upgrade the facilities there and we want to give the kids, the kids of the city the best. And for me, I said, oh, great, perfect, you know, that sounds amazing. So I just wanted to, you know, come here with that positivity. And long-term for me and our club, I would love to help the city just in hosting tournaments, bringing money. Like a lot of cities, Tupelo, for example, Meridian, they base their entire GDP off of hosted tournaments and combined events with their sporting people and MRD would be like our equivalent as well. And ultimately, long, long-term for now, having a professional soccer team coming out of Macomb. And I just wanted to say how excited I am to continue our partnership with the city of Macomb and I can't wait to see how big we can make this.
Thank you, thank you. Moving to item number five.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I hear him. I, 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 you do need a place to play sports. But still, I wanted to ask a question. Like back in the day, didn't the city have Heaton Field? I'm just asking a question, back in the day.
Have what field?
Heaton Field.
Did, did at one time.
Can we ask the school or do the school have it? Can we ask?
The school has it.
Can we, can you ask and talk to them about maybe giving it back so the youth can have somewhere to play? I'm just asking.
I could ask them to see if, but let me talk to the superintendent.
You'll talk to the superintendent?
Yes. Select McCarthy.
So there's a plan to build the bathrooms back at Edgewood and make that a soccer field? Is that what I just heard him say?
The?
That you told him?
The field will be leveled off, grass will be there and they will be able to play on that. It will not be dirt.
And we're going to put a bathroom too?
The Edgewood Park was, when we had plans, Edgewood Park was the next park to receive a bathroom. Air Jairs, not Air Jairs, Barretown received theirs. Then we built one at the sports park and Edgewood Park was the next park scheduled to get a bathroom.
Can we put that on the agenda next week to vote on?
You can?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Where, where do money come from?
Select woman Isaac.
Mayor, I'm still saying something can have a follow-up plan. I'm just saying, would you please talk to the superintendent?
I said I would talk to the superintendent. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Select McCarthy, on you.
Okay, the Water Company of America. Of course, I feel like our expertise has increased about the problems that we have had in the water department and we're making progress. And so I feel that at this juncture, this contract, in my opinion, is no longer needed. And, and I'm suggesting that it be placed on the agenda for cancellation.
I don't disagree with you on that, but I need to talk, have the attorney look at it because we have an obligation there to pay them based upon that contract. And if we cancel the contract, what happens to the obligation of payment that was included in that contract? So I would say first, let, let the attorney look at that contract and look at our obligation to pay them because there's a number of years that we have to pay them. So.
Well, I was on the assumption that you still had to pay them, but they discovered.
But let's make sure that, that we don't cancel the contract and be in a, in a situation that could come and bite us in the butt. So let our city attorney look at that and if she finds that we can get out of the contract, let's do it. Okay? Select McCarthy.
Make sure I'm understanding what, still, what they have found.
We're responsible.
We're responsible for, but what you're saying, they need to quit looking.
Yeah.
It's, it's time for us to take responsibility to find these things ourselves, right?
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm hearing. Suspend the, y'all quit looking. It's time for us to be responsible, to find these things.
And I'm not disagreeing with either one of you. I'm saying on the legal side of it, let the city attorney review the contract and if we can get out of it, let's get out of it. That's what I'm saying. But I'm just saying, let, 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 I'm not, I'm not a legal person. She's the legal person. She reviews contracts. Let her review the contract and if we can get out, let's get out. That's all I'm saying. Okay? And can you review it? Can we get a copy up to you and you can review it? And would you be able to, to tell us yea or nay? And if you say yea, we can get out, we add it to the agenda? Okay? Go ahead, Select McCarthy.
Okay, well, the next thing was the Christmas lights. It's come to my attention that the current lights are a second and the guys that are putting them up are suggesting that they be replaced because we've had them for so many years. And then they're surprised that they haven't started a fire or something. So what I'm saying is going forward, we need to set a budget to replace them probably over the next three years. And then of course, talking to Select McCarthy, he's saying that he has a plan where we can get a lot of this stuff. But we do need to store, replace them.
Okay, when it comes to the angels, the snowflakes and things like that, most of our vendors here do not carry those things. They carry lights, things like that, but the snowflakes, the angels and all that that we put up, as you can see, because Ms. Emma came and got those from me, can be expensive. But, but yes, you have to, with Christmas lights and Christmas ornaments, you have to constantly refurbish them or purchase new ones. You can't just sit there and just five years, 10 years, put up and never replace them. I agree. Select McCarthy.
How are they a safety hazard?
The wiring is bad, a lot of them.
Like the wiring is showing through?
You see, in the past, let me, let me enlighten you. In the past, when, what's the gentleman's name, you stay on Pearl River, who passed?
Well, that's what I'm about to get to.
Mr. Andrews, Mr. Andrews would go in and rehab those for us, but he's no longer here. Select McCarthy.
I mean, isn't it just some heat tray that goes on it? Heat tray?
I'm not sure what goes on those ornaments, but he was good at going through and refurbishing them for us, Mr. Andrews. But he passed on and we have not had anyone doing that for us since then.
I guess my stance is, you know, light bulbs made in the 90s probably go out pretty quick. And so if it's still working, you know, like I don't understand why we can't have the skill in-house to maintain these. Down another path, though, is what's going on with the Pearl River lights? I remember those growing up. Do we still have those?
That was Mr. Andrews again.
The bigger ones?
What bigger ones? Everything that.
They were like shoulder height.
Everything that, the display and Christmas stuff on Pearl River was done by Mr. Andrews. Except for the things on the pole, everything else was done by Mr. Andrew and his Macomb beautification committee there. I don't know where.
Privately?
Privately.
So that's not a, the city doesn't have a shed full of Christmas?
No, we do not.
You just have one tree and a bunch of poles?
Select McCarthy.
Okay, Mayor, they also said the plugs on the pole did not work, all of them. That it was a shortage somewhere, some of the plugs just not working. That y'all need to call Energy and reach out to Energy.
It's not Energy who did those. We put those up, we have to call an electrician and that electrician would have to go in and do that. We were responsible for putting the boxes on the pole. Energy gave us permission to put it on their pole, but we had to hire an electrician to do it for us.
Okay, so when are we going to do a work order for them to start doing some of the poles on Simon Street?
That work order will have to come from Mr. Spurlock. And then once Mr. Spurlock gets that work order, he will get an electrician, have them to go up and test every socket there on Simon Street or any other area that need testing. Okay? All right, anything else, Select McCarthy?
No.
Okay. Down to me, Infomart. You have invoice there for Infomart for the month, what month is it?
Twelve seven. Seven and twelve seven.
Okay, and the price is $79,167.73.
That's a low.
That's a low.
Yep, we started looking at them, buying ice cream and candy.
Yeah, you began looking at them and checking for ice cream and candy and all that. You'll find that things do get a little lower. Okay? Also, you will see the next one, put that on the agenda. The next one is from the airport. The air conditioning, is the air conditioning, no. The annual contribution is $30,000. We usually wait until January to give them their annual annual contribution. I'm asking that we put this off until after the first of the year because that's when we start getting large amounts of our Avaloran taxes from the county. The second, next is half, half of the cost for replacement of HVAC for them. You will see the full cost and then you will see the cost being split between us and the county. And our contribution would be 400 and, what is it? $434.38.
Four thousand?
I think it's American.
Four thousand, my mistake. My, my, my mistake. Thank you for, for catching me.
I'm going to do all my work.
With that being said, I don't remember who asked for the, the 501 for Hope for the Holiday.
Mr. McCarthy.
Was it?
Yes, it was.
No, it was not.
Please, please let me run my meeting. Someone asked that we provide a copy of 501 in which I do have a copy of that 501 in our package. And she has asked that we would sponsor for 500, sponsorship for $500 for Hope for the Holiday. And it was put on, it was table for this 501 status. You see the 501, C3 status. Let's go ahead, if it's okay with the board, put it back on the agenda and the board vote it up and down.
Yes.
Okay? Because clearly, 501, C3. Okay? Who?
The contractor, the air conditioner. I mean, I see an invoice for.
He's going, he's going back to the HVAC now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know who this is.
You want to know who the vendor is?
Yeah, I don't know who the vendor is, I see where the invoice is coming from, but.
What's the name on top?
The service owner.
I know the signature.
I can't read that. I'm in case you none of this.
I will have to go back and clear that up with you.
Those $8,000 unit, I can't even tell what size it is on.
That's it, I'll have to go back and pull it for you and get that to you.
Are both of them going on the agenda?
Yes. No, $30,000. The $30,000, we're going to hold that until the first of the year. Okay? You should have on your desk, I don't think I made, I'm going to ask. The Recreation Director got a call from a nonprofit organization wanting to either purchase or for the city to give the fencing around the the park, Edgewood Park. I called the State Auditor's Office to see if that was permissible. The State Auditor's Office first wanted to know whether or not the person who was double leading, double leading, em. Demolishing the park was going to sell the fence. No, he was not. Okay, then they told me that we had to go according to 7/25/25. And so I turned it over to the attorney to ask the attorney to provide us an understanding of what 7/25/25, this is your explanation. Okay? So I'm going to turn it over. 17/25. So I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney to talk to us in reference to that.
That the city can sell or give away non-real property like torn-down fencing from a demolition, but the process depends on whether the fencing has any fair market value. So in a nutshell, what you guys would need to make a finding on the record that the fencing is, has a fair market value of zero. Enter that into. um, enter that into your minutes, and then the city can dispose of the property as it's, so C's fit.
Okay, select my Cotty.
Two things, who's the organization?
Ms. Joyce, uh, can you provide the organization that contacted you?
All right, and then two is, I, I don't, I don't know if they understand completely, but we hired a bulldoze company. They're not like rolling up the fence, okay? They're, uh, they're plowing and going. You know, making a big pile and picking it up, putting it in the back of a truck and taking it to a landfill. You know, I, I mean, I, I don't think anything's usable at the end, end of this unless they come now and start unrolling it themselves with some wire cutters. That's the only problem.
Well, technically, it, it, it belongs to the contractor. If they get it from the contractor, that'd be the best way to go and leave us out of it.
One hundred percent.
So they should be working with whoever's doing the demolition and let them, you know, work between themselves if, unless we own it. If we own it, if he don't want it and we own it, then, you know.
We're not leaving it behind.
But we letting them demolish it, so it belongs to them. That take, that takes it off of us.
If, if we hire someone to replace that wall, he's gotta take that wood down, but she rock up. What is he doing with that wood? It's, 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 it's his disposal.
But according to State Auditor's Office, if he is not going to sell it, then we have to follow seven, seventeen dash twenty-five dash twenty-five. Yeah, so. That's, that's, I, I'm just telling you what State Auditor's Office said.
We need a credit from the demo contractor.
But man, what if we need some of that top rail at another one of my field over there, uh, at sports bar? We can take that and use it over there, see?
We need to buy it.
All the things that's not messed up, the top rail. I'm just being un- easy to land it out there.
Select my Cotty.
Person we hired, is taking a bulldozer and driving right down that fence line and pulled it all off. Ain't no, ain't no, ain't no handwork being done on this project, okay? Only thing working is a really large machine.
Ms. Joyce, um, when the con- when, when the, when the organization contacted you, what, what exactly did they say or request?
Thank you for your service.
So, so the quest- the question Ms. Joyce wants to know, where she can contact the organization, is, is would this board be willing to allow her to negotiate? No?
I mean, I think at first you gotta ask the contractor if there's gonna be anything to negotiate.
Okay.
I personally, if I could.
Go ahead.
See, when we hire a contractor to demo our home, the homes, when he pull up on site, everything goes, that's his. If he wanna take some and take with him, that's fine. If he just wanna give it to somebody, he thinks, do it, that's fine. This problem, it should work the same way.
One hundred percent.
Look, so Ms. Joyce, please notify the organization that we cannot give ourselves, okay?
It's the property of the contractor.
All right, moving right along. You have in your hand, and you all would have to authorize me to s- sign this. Uh, I received today in my office the certificate of substantial completion, uh, signed by Steve Cox, and he is submitting this for us to go ahead and approve. So I would need your approval, uh, for this, cause I'm not gonna sign it without you authorizing me to sign. Yes.
I think we need to walk through it. I think we need to have a board tour.
If you want a board tour, you can go and get Steve, uh, to walk you through it. Uh, I, I was down there, I've been through it, uh, but if you need a, uh, anyone else, you can get with Steve Cox, and Steve will take you through the facility. But he is the project manager, and the project manager is saying, here's your certificate of substantial completion, signed off by him, okay? And I do not have the authority. He thought I was gonna sign off on it today when he brought it. I said, no, sir. I said, I have to get the board to authorize me to sign off. Uh, select my Cotty.
So it has gas?
Uh, I was told that they would be putting the meter in today. I do not know that for a fact. But, but to be substantial completion, that was not, uh, according to Steve, uh. No, I'm just saying. There, there, he's getting them, but as far as the contractor in the building is, is substantial complete, based upon Steve, and he is the project manager. Uh, Selecton Thompson, Selecton Mullins.
The additional work by, I guess, the owner Amtrak, so the filter is complete by, uh, the construction company.
That's correct.
But we still have additional work to be done by
The signal and the, the signage, all that has to be done by, uh, Amtrak, yes.
That's the exterior?
That's on the exterior.
Okay, definitely pushing that one.
Yes, that has nothing to do, that part has nothing to do with that's Amtrak.
Okay, alright.
What's Amtrak?
The signage.
Is that what he's referring to, lit signage?
That, that paragraph there, where it says Amtrak, that, that's the signage. Deals with the signage.
Okay, alright.
I, I, I would encourage the leader of the city to try to get us a tour, if you could. Just send it out to us via email. It's, uh, I, I think it's probably over two million at this point. Um, I think we wanna make sure we got everything good for our work.
If it's the wishes of the board for the mayor to, uh, schedule a tour, I would be more than glad to contact Mister Cox and schedule a tour for the board.
Oh, good.
Of course, uh, I'm like a lot of us are gonna know what we're looking at anyway, but at the same time, you think you can get Henry to accompany us?
Has he done a final inspection?
I don't know.
I'm sure he did electrical plumbing.
Did you see what he just said?
Nope. Said what, Mister Henry?
Your city had inspectors not signed off.
Okay. Ms. Joyce, it was something else you asked me to cover, wasn't it? Okay. We have an invitation from Gertrude Guard, um, for Saturday, November the twenty-second. You should have that. Uh, you're invited to a tent. Anything else? Anything else? Anything else? Uh, Department head? Oh, Michelle, I, 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 forgive me. Michelle Lambus wants to come to us. She was scheduled to be here before, but she was out of the country, so now she's back. So, we're gonna listen to her for a moment.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. Um, uh, I am coming from the Mississippi Department of Employment Security. And so I talked with, um, Ms. Jessica before, uh, about, um, this program that we have, which is a collaborative effort between DHS and MDS, um, with the TANF program. So what our part with that is, people who are recipients of the TANF program are required to either work or volunteer a certain number of hours. Those number of hours are, um, uh, determined by DHS, and it's our responsibility to find work site locations. So whether, um, that person has a job that we can try to place them in, or if we can find a volunteer opportunity for them to, uh, be, and so that they can, um, acquire work habits and work skills, and hopefully at the end of it, they can meet their requirements so they can continue to receive their TANF benefits. But also, we can put them in a position where they will gain experience, um, to where they hopefully can, uh, secure employment, um, at some point, not necessarily with the work site location, like what we've had in the past with internships that y'all might be, um, familiar with. But this is, um, uh, there is no, um, tie to, um, a requirement for you to hire the person that be in. This is strictly looking for work site locations where a person can come and serve their hours. Um, and the only thing that the city would have to do is whoever that, um, it, uh, person is that would be signing off on their time sheets, would sign off on their time sheets and turn it in to us so that we can, um, turn that in and they can be a, um, get whatever benefit that that, um, attributes them for. Cause this program helps them overcome, um, transportation issues or childcare issues. And so, um, to help them, you know, springboard them into employment opportunities. So we're looking for lots of locations, um, throughout every county. Um, uh, and, uh, since we've moved to the McCaven office, um, Pike County is still one of our counties, and so is Agate and all that. And there are no restrictions about whether it has to be a nonprofit or municipal.